Two minutes. Hi, everybody. Apologise about that. We've sent a new link out. Miss Carle just texted it out to people. So I'm just going to give it a couple of minutes while everybody else gets back on because we had quite a high attendance at the the previous one. But due to technical difficulties, they wouldn't allow me to share the PowerPoint with you. So we'll just give it a couple of minutes while people can get logged back on. And then I'll, I'll, I'll begin. Okay, welcome, welcome to tonight's presentation then. As I said before, we want to share with you our plans for reopening and give you an overview and also give you an opportunity to ask any questions that you, that you may have. I'll print those questions out and put them on the website as well after that. Miss Carle just sent out a new link, so hopefully more parents will join us as we, as we go along. Okay, next please, next slide. So in terms of the plan, none of the fundamentals have changed since the autumn term. So you will be aware that during the autumn term, we worked closely with our risk assessment and shared a lot of information with both you as, as parents, pupils and staff. And since we've heard about reopening again from the Prime Minister and reopening from the 8th of March, as a senior leadership team, we've focused on a number of things. We've gone back to our risk assessment and reviewed how that works and looked at the measures that are in place. And basically gone through that with our, with our staff. So everybody is aware. If you would like to look at the risk assessment, I've put it on our website so that you can see all the measures that are in place for us as a school to ensure that we open schools as safe as possible. The other thing we've been doing as well is preparing for asymptomatic testing and I'll talk more about testing in a minute. But that's really in essence, the big change from or one of the big changes from when we opened in September. The, the, the whole testing system in school is, is something that was new to us in January and something we've done really successfully in the key worker and vulnerable school. But it's something we've had to scale up on a quite a large level this week. I have sent out two letters to parents. The first, what, the reason why I've sent two out and staggered the time in which we sent the letters out was there's quite a lot of information to, to give you and present to you. So the first information was explaining the testing process, how and when students could get tested. And the second letter that you received this week was around reopening guidance and basically what you could expect when your, your child attends school from, from Monday. We've also published as well a, a video of the testing arrangements. So if you follow us on Twitter, for example, you can go on to our Twitter feed and you can find a video that talks students, parents through how they can be, how they will be tested in school. And another, another key thing for us is making sure that we communicate clearly with staff, pupils and parents. Obviously, tonight's meeting has not gone to plan at the start and I apologise about that. But it's important that we give you all the correct information that you need. It's important that staff are clear on how we return and the routines, et cetera. And it's vital as well that pupils are supported in their return. And, and, and I think that's the key word, supported. Young people have had a lot of time out of school and it's important that as a, as a responsible school, that we support them to get back into learning as much as possible. And that brings me on to the return. So we've spent a lot of time in terms of planning for day one, day two, and how we go back to re-establishing our, our culture and ethos and what the focus will be. And then we've also looked at planning for the remainder of the term and the academic year. We have spent time reviewing the academic calendar. And following this meeting and into next week, I'll update all parents in terms of when you can expect to get reports, when parents' evenings will be, and other key school events such as options evening, et cetera. Thank you. I just want to go through, just, I suppose the health and safety expectations first that are really important. So anyone who has symptoms, has tested positive for COVID-19, is a close contact of someone who has tested positive for COVID-19 or is required, required to self-isolate for travel reasons, should not attend school. And that, that's really important. And I'd ask us as parents, if you have children that do have symptoms or somebody in your household has symptoms, please do not send your children to school. Let us know. Ring school and we can advise you if need be. Face coverings, and I'll keep coming back to this at points in the presentation, need to be worn in school by adults and pupils when indoors, including classrooms. And we have a medical form for parents to fill in if their, their child is, is unable to wear face masks. They'll be given a lanyard and they, they must wear it at all times. And we need to be strict on the wearing of face masks. The, the, I suppose issue with that is that it's a, the day is a long time to ask staff and students to wear face masks for. So we need to be mindful of that and we need to make sure that, that our young people can get outside at break and lunchtimes where they can get fresh air, where they can socially distance, but where they can take their, their face masks off as well. And I think that's really important. And I'd ask that as parents, you send your child to school with their, with their own face mask. And that you make sure that, you know, that's fit for purpose for your child. So it's either disposed of at the end of the day and a new one given or cleaned or, you know, it, that it, that it supports keeping them safe. We'll promote regular and frequent hand washing. There will be obviously soap and water in toilets as you'd expect. But we will provide hand sanitizer in all classrooms, hand sanitizer on entrances and exits in, in school. And, and everything we can do with regards to that. In terms of, we will try and reduce contacts and maximise distancing between all pupils and, and visitors alike as well. We have arrangements in place that I'll go into in a, in a minute that will, will continue that. We have and continue to do, we've done this since, since September, September, when we returned, enhanced our cleaning team. They are in all, all day. They are cleaning constantly whilst school is open and at the end of the day and before school. And, and making sure that key essential things like handrails, door handles, things that are regularly touched are regularly cleaned, as well as toilets and classrooms, et cetera. When students are in an ICT room, they'll be asked to wipe down the keyboard at the start and at the end of the lesson. That means it's been cleaned twice. And it means that anybody coming onto the keyboard will then wipe. So it's been, you know, double wiped before they use it. We will be keeping classroom windows open. That will be very much down to the discretion of the teacher with regards to how wide those windows are open because we need to be careful. We don't want students to be cold as well, but there'll be air circulation where possible, well, in every classroom and, and doors will be open as well, where we can air conditioning on, fresh air conditioning, then we will do that. We're asking all staff to engage with the NHS Test and Trace. And, and, you know, whilst we can't force people to do that, I, I think the majority of people are supporting that. All those measures above that I've, I've explained are not affected by the fact that we're, we're doing testing. That is still a requirement. The only, the only reason for the students to not wear face masks would be within PE. And obviously because of the strenuous exercise, students won't be expected to wear, to wear a face mask within PE. I've just seen a message from a, a parent who's just asked me to recap. You, you haven't missed much because we, we started, we started later. So I'll make sure that parents get a copy of this presentation. Next slide, please. So in terms of the testing, asymptomatic testing is basically taking place Thursday and Friday this week. As parents, you should have had letters. And we currently have 557 consent forms that have been sent in. Can I ask please, and it's important tomorrow when testing continues for years nine and 10, can I ask that you have to make sure that they have, that you filled in their consent form prior to them arriving at school? So today we had a number of students who hadn't, the parents hadn't completed the consent forms and that delayed things slightly. So if you go on to our website, you'll see a link to a consent form. It's an electronic form. Once you complete that, it registers your child to have their test with us. So it registers your child with the school. So if you could just do that, that'd be great. I've got to say, it's the first time we've done this on a, on a mass scale. I'm incredibly proud of the team of staff that have, have so professionally done this. We've completed 317 tests in school today, which is, it's phenomenal, to be honest. They started at half past eight, finished just after four o'clock. They have not stopped all day. They, it, it's been, you know, it's been phenomenal. The tests are taking place in the sports hall. So when students come in, if you, you've got a child in year nine and 10 tomorrow, they, they don't go into school at all. They go around to the, where they're heading to the, to the yard and then they make the way down past on the yard, past the estate's entrance and through the fire exit into the sports hall. As I said earlier, if you want to have a look at how that process works, if you go on to Twitter and you look at the school's Twitter feed, you'll see a video there that, that basically explains the testing process. I've then put a table in and like I said, I'll, I'll make sure that all staff, sorry, all parents get this presentation tomorrow. But basically, we have to do three tests in the school. The reason for those three tests are twofold. One is to show students how to test because after the third test, then they're required to test at home twice a week. But the second reason is to break those asymptomatic links. So what we do know with some of the new variants, et cetera, is that the symptoms in, in, in people can be less and less. In fact, a, a lot of people don't have any symptoms. So obviously they don't isolate, et cetera, because they don't know they've got the, the virus. So the reason for us doing the testing initially and then students carrying on at home is to try and break those links. Okay? If you ever have a test and it's positive, so if you, when you're testing from home, you must let school know as well, please, and, and register that test. And staff will also be testing and they'll have home testing kits. And again, we have to have the same consent form that, that, that students and young people have as, as well. And that's really important. Thank you. In terms of protecting the most vulnerable, so we have protective measures in place for people who are shielding. And even where that person has received a first or a second vaccination dose, those measures are, are still put in place. Anybody who is, is shielding in terms of an adult who's working at school or a, a young person who comes to school, shouldn't come to school. If children or staff live with someone who is shielding, they can still come to, to school, but they, they need to make sure they take particular care to follow the public health guidance. What I would say, and it's why I put it in red, is if you have any concerns or you'd like to discuss that, then please contact school ASAP. And we will provide you with as much reassurance, support, guidance as we can. And in terms of continuity of learning, and I just want to reiterate this, so parents are aware. Where a member of staff is required to self-isolate, isolate, but is otherwise well, they are expected to continue to teach remotely from home. So your child will still have their lesson, but the teacher will be delivering it from home, a little like what's been happening at the moment. There will be a teacher in the classroom with them, but their normal teacher will teach them. Where a pupil is required to self-isolate, but they're otherwise well. So that might be where they've been identified as a contact maybe from somebody in school or somebody within their house has tested positive and they're having to isolate. Then they will log on from home and the work will be set for them. And that will be a mixture of Oak Academy, the United Learning Curriculum, or it might even involve logging into lessons that are taking place in school so that they can still join in with those lessons and not miss any learning. Thank you. So in terms of our risk assessment, it's available for everybody to view on our website. And, and you know, if you do have any concerns or you're interested in the measures we've put in place, then please, please go to the website and look at that. We will ensure, or we have ensured that we cross-reference this against any national guidance released from the government. So you can be assured that any guidance that has been set out, that we, we have followed that. As head teacher, I put that risk assessment together along with the executive business manager. We have to have that risk assessment signed off by the United Learning Board. That has been signed off this week so that you have the reassurance as parents that it's not just one person doing it and might have missed something. It's gone through a number of, a number of checks. In terms of some key areas to highlight, the bubbles will remain the same as prior to Christmas. So for example, year seven will be on the maths corridor, year eight will be on the English corridor, year 11 will be on sea floor. Year 10s will be on the art corridor and year nines will be on science. Due to us using the sports hall for testing that first week and early into the second week, that, that will mean that year seven students don't have access to the sports hall at lunchtime, but they will have indoor spaces in A2 and A3. We'll share this with the pupils on Monday, of course. They'll still have access to the 3G for outdoors play and they'll access that through the middle fire exit doors that they use to enter and exit the school at the start and at the end of the day. In terms of beginning and end of day routine, obviously a letter went out to all parents. We'll send a copy of this and, and the risk assessment after the briefing. Actually, you can see the risk assessment on the website, but I'll send a copy of these slides. The staggered start and finish times prior to Christmas will remain in place. And students and staff must sanitise when entering the building points through the day and at points through the day. You'll see there, I've put on the slides of when you, when you start, but basically it's the same start time as before Christmas and the same place where you enter or exit at the end of the day. The key changes to the risk assessments are face masks. And obviously, as I said earlier, whenever we are inside, we must wear face masks. Increased ventilation, so things like having windows open, making sure that door, classroom doors are open, et cetera. Asymptomatic testing is a big thing and I've spoke to you about that. And then the, the home testing for staff and students is also a, a big change from, from before Christmas. Thank you. So just some other things. Sport and PE will predominantly take place outdoors. We will only deliver approved activities. Students will be asked to continue to arrive in school PE kit on the day they have PE. Please ensure that they, they, they must wear school PE kit, not just any other branded sportswear. And the reason we're doing that is to avoid close contact in the changing rooms. On March the 8th, there'll be no PE lessons taking place. So all students need to arrive in, in full school uniform, please. Students will be provided with a, a new timetable. And we will start on week one of our two-week timetable. I will explain what Monday looks like in a little bit. We will get back to offering extracurricular clubs and activities and we'll publish a revised extracurricular timetable shortly. We will not be taking part in any external visits. It will be reviewed again at Easter, but for example, we won't be playing football matches against other schools or going on an educational visit to, you know, a museum in the city, et cetera. That, that won't be happening. We will get back up and running breakfast and after-school club, breakfast clubs as well, but they'll run within their year group. Food technology, that will operate, it will operate a mixture of practical and not practical lessons. Music lessons will take place in the, in the music classrooms as well. And then again, I've reiterated that I have through every slide, the importance of the, of the face masks and ensuring that, that you, you wear those. Obviously, on the issues of face masks, it's important that the face mask rule, if you like, is there to protect young people, to protect staff, but also to protect families as well. So, you know, we want to try and, and ensure that transmission is reduced, eradicated and, and, and face masks is, is one of the ways to try and support that. Okay, thank you. So Monday, the 8th of March looks like this. We've been very conscious that young people have been out of school for a long period of time. And what we didn't want to do was just throw them back into the timetable and expect to get on with it. So Monday will be a wellbeing day. You can see what's going on there. So in terms of in period one, there'll be a whole school assembly and that will be done by Miss Carle, Miss Hall and Mr Cliff. And the focus of that will be very much around standard expectations and reminding students of, you know, what we expect when we're in school because it's been a long time away from school. Period two will be around careers sessions or a careers introduction for key stage three students. And that'll be delivered by their, their form tutors. Period three, I'll be doing some assemblies to year 11 and year 10. And also during period three, key stage three will do some form tutor reading. I know that they do really enjoy that and, and so that should be good for them. And, you know, I think that enhanced time with the form tutor will be really good. Period four, I'll meet key stage three, so students in year seven to nine and, and for an assembly. And then in the key stage four students, year 10 and 11 will do form tutor reading. And then period five, there'll be a live event that all students will participate in. During their period one session, they'll be able to ask any questions regarding concerns they have or information they want to know about, et cetera. And they'll, they'll kind of put that in a box in the classroom. And then Miss Carle and Miss Hall will answer those questions. Miss Carle will do it for years 10 and 11. Miss Hall will do it for years seven to nine. And, and what we're hoping there is that we lay any fears that they may have through starting back to school. We don't want them worrying. Want to reassure it's, you know, it, it's really, really important. Period six, we're going to give out timetables, check equipment and uniform and go, you know, just recap on the assembly again. On the Tuesday, we will start the timetable and, and students will go back into class. Heads of year will focus on uniform, sanctions from the previous day. So if, you know, if a student picked up a sanction, the head of year would talk to them, support them, challenge them a little bit. And also punctuality. Please ensure that your child gets to school on time. It's so important. They miss so much time out of school, but even 10 minutes. I, I always think if you're five minutes late to school or five minutes late to a lesson, you're missing the most important five minutes. And you, you, you then don't understand what's going on because you've missed the explanation part of the lesson or tutor time, et cetera. And that can often lead to to poor behaviour because you don't know what's happening because you weren't there. Spot checks will be conducted with SLT to support expectations. So we'll be highly visible. We'll be about the building, we'll be there to support students. But at the same time, we'll be there to challenge them if, if they're getting it wrong because we need young people to come back and behave in a a safe and responsible manner. We're also quite, as a school, a close community and we need to have respect for, for one another that, that this will be difficult for lots of people, students and staff alike. And it's important that we're all together and support one another. Thank you. So we've got the spring six and the spring six govern what we do within a classroom. The reason we have the spring six is so that it creates an environment that students can get on and, and learn and make progress. And, and at the end of the day, that's why they come to school. It also keeps them safe and hopefully makes them happy. And I think as a parent, you just want reassurance that your child is going to be safe, he's going to be happy and, and will learn and make progress. And so we will be very much following the spring six and staff will be consistently following the spring six. Students know about the spring six. We introduced it way before Christmas. They know what it means. They, they know how it's followed in class. And it's important that they follow those expectations. And if they follow those expectations, then they'll do well with us. If, if they don't follow those expectations, then they will be challenged for that. And, and I don't apologise for that. On the 20th of March last year, we were asked to close school. So we're nearly a year on. And young people have missed so much school. What we can't do is accept that some young people will disrupt the learning for others because we need to catch them up. We need to work with Because we need to catch them up, we need to work with them. We need to support young people to make sure that they can learn. So that's, that's why we're, we're doing it. Okay. And then moving on, please, we go to the community five. That's very similar to the spring six, but it operates around corridors and in the playground, et cetera. When students are on social breaks, this is, you know, five expectations that we expect. What I will say about the community five and the spring six is there's nothing groundbreaking with it. And they're probably in a way similar expectations that I had when we're at school than when parents were at school as well. I, I think the key thing is that we, we follow this really consistently. We, we also, you know, know that young people are, are human and learning and make mistakes and that's fine. It's just, it's about learning from those mistakes and we move on. And I think that's the important part of it. But we do have to have expectations because that's, that's really important. And I think parents would support us with that. And, you know, we want a school that is a safe and happy place to come to and that where we'll, where we'll do really, really well. Thank you. So we need young people in uniform and I think that's really important. There's a picture there that shows the uniform. But basically, we, we need to make sure that young people are in blazers, shirt and tie, black trousers and black footwear. Please, no trainers. What we don't want to be doing is sanctioning students around the uniform. This is, this is not a change to the uniform policy. It's just that we need to remind people, so please don't take this as me shouting the orders. It's not, it's just to remind you of what our expectations are. If a young person isn't in uniform, then we will challenge them about that because we have to have consistency for all. Thank you. And everybody will be expected to be in full uniform. You can see the policy on the website. Everybody can be in full uniform on Monday. We have some ties to purchase in school, so if you if you've lost your tie or whatever, I think the ties are about £5. So if you bring that, we can purchase one for you on, on Monday. And just a reminder about footwear, please make sure it's plain white footwear, not trainers. Thank you. We do have standards on nails and makeup as well. The, I think the nail bars haven't been open anyway, so shouldn't be an issue. But it's just to remind you on what our policy is. And none of this has changed, but obviously we will challenge people if, if they don't follow the policy. I think with this, we're fair, but we're strict and I think we've got a, a good balance, you know. As, as a school, we'll always try and communicate with parents. We'll always try and work with you. But it's important that we have those expectations in place and that, that young people follow them. Thank you. So finally, and I did want to end on a, a, a positive really. And I, I want to say this, that this is all new to us. So, you know, whether it be the asymptomatic testing, they're getting used to wearing face masks in school, it's new to us as staff. You know, I've been teaching 21 years, I've never worn a face mask in school until this last, this last year. I've never been part of a mass testing programme, so it is, so it is all new to us. But what I can assure you is we are following all national guidance and following it all closely. And there'll be no corners cut with that. I want to assure you that we're doing everything we can to ensure that our students, our staff, the families of students and staff and the local community are kept as, as safe as possible. And, and our staff are working really hard to prepare our return. You know, the amount of staff who've been, you know, working tirelessly, either remotely delivering lessons and then coming into school to make sure classrooms are ready or are coming in and doing a, a long shift testing students. And it's, it's been phenomenal and I'm really proud of the way that Springs has stepped up and provided the education that we, we have over this last year. And I think this lockdown has, has been even better than the last one. And, and finally, I want to say by, and, and I really mean this, and I hope it comes across, that we care about all we do. And we also care about how we do it. And that brings me on to my final point, that we are really looking forward to seeing our students on Monday. I've been in the building for the last three months. We've had a, a, a small number of students in the building with a small number of staff to obviously follow the guidance. But a school is not a nice place when there's not the noises of a vibrant, busy school. And, and that's what, as teachers, we've missed. And I hope it comes across how much we care because this is more than a job. It's, it's something you, you get engrossed in and I want the very best for our young people and the families that we support. So you are my assurance that everything we do will be with students, staff, you as families and the community in mind. And that's my promise to you as, as head teacher. Okay, I think the final slide is around questions. So I'll, I'll just take a quick drink of water and then I'll wait for Miss Cartlidge to ask me a few questions.
Okay, while you're drinking, just to let you know, there's a lot of students saying how excited they are to come back to school, which has been really lovely to read.
Fabulous. Well, I'm excited to see you all too. It's, it's going to be brilliant.
And okay, first question, could you just clarify, do students have to keep their masks on all day?
Okay, so that's a really good question. And the answer is whenever you're in the building, you have to have your masks on. I understand that that's difficult. I know that that's a challenge. We have to follow the guidance. We will, you know, as a young person, you need to make sure that you can get out at break and lunchtime, get some fresh air, socially distance and, and take your mask off. And I think, I think that's really important, but we, we, we do have to wear masks. Whenever inside, that includes teachers and that includes pupils. It's just to keep us safe and try and reduce any effects of the virus.
Okay, thank you. And then a follow on question from that. What will happen if a student refuses to wear a mask?
Yeah, obviously I hope that won't happen. And, and obviously we've got consent for those students who are unable to wear a mask on, on medical grounds or, or something else. If a student refuses to wear a mask. To me, that's a breach of, of, of our health and safety expectations now. I, I, it's, it's a careful, it's a very difficult one, isn't it? Because actually, what we can't do have is, is young people breaking those rules and putting others at risk. So we have to either sit down with that young person, explain the reason why and get them to comply. Or, and work with parents on that. Or, or if that doesn't work, then a, a sanction would need to apply. But we, we'll do everything we can to avoid that sanction. But ultimately, it's about keeping the greater population safe. And if, if that's what a sanction is needed, then, then that will be it. But we will do everything we can before then to try and work with that young person and their family to make sure that they understand the reasons why and they wear it.
Okay, thank you. And then so far, this is the final mask question. Will masks be provided for students?
We do have a a number of masks that we're, we're receiving from the D F E that we can give out. But if we are giving out nearly a thousand masks a day, they will, they will soon run out. So if at all possible, I would ask that you provide your own mask. I think, you know, we've all, we've all got used to wearing masks when we've been out in the community or shopping, et cetera. So if you could provide your own mask, that would be really appreciated. If you turn up at school and you've forgotten your mask, we'll give you one.
Okay, I thought it was the last mask question. There is, there is one more. Do teachers have to wear masks while they're teaching?
Yes, they do. And, and you might be aware that in the previous, just before Christmas, teach, some teachers were wearing the shields. And we, and in the new guidance, not allowed to wear the shields, you have to wear masks.
Okay, lots of questions about timetables, so students perhaps have misplaced timetables. And I've explained that all students will be given a new timetable on Monday.
And I think it's important to say that that's the reason, one of the reasons why we're doing what we're doing on Monday and not putting students straight back into lessons is to try and reassure, provide things like timetables, just catch up with students and see how they are. And then the learning can start from Tuesday.
Okay, a couple of questions regarding the leisure centre entrance. Will students be able to access that before school and after school?
Yeah, so the students that use that entrance, year 10s, I believe, they will be able to use that as per before Christmas.
Okay. And then lots of questions, just asking where parents can check start and finish times. Where is that information available?
Okay, so the start and finish times is on the letter that has gone out this week. If you, you can get that on the website. If you, I think it's on the coronavirus link and then you go to the letters link, it's on there. And it's the letter that's been sent out this week. And it is the same start and finish times. Wait there, sorry. Mr Howell, could you go back to the start and finish time slide, please? It's also on this slide. So there you go, if people can see that. Start and finish times are there for each year group, if you, you have a look at that. But it's also on the letter that, that went out this week. So yeah, that should give everybody the information that, that they need.
Okay, thank you. And then will there be any kind of social distancing in place within classrooms?
We will operate social distancing in classrooms as much as possible. Obviously, people will be aware that our class sizes are, you know, as any secondary school can be large. What we do do though is make sure we look at how classrooms are set up to try and reduce the risk. So things like windows open for ventilation, all young people will, and staff will have masks on. And seating all faces one way, so obviously, you know, you know, you're not, you're not facing one another and interacting with one another face to face. So there, you know, even though, you know, it's not physically possible to say half the class and, because we haven't got enough classrooms. And even though classrooms might be full, this still measures in place to try and reduce the spread of the virus.
Okay. And then a couple of questions around sort of practical lessons. Will students be able to do science practicals and will they be able to access the library?
In terms of the library, they will be able to access some of the library at some points. But obviously before Christmas, that was very reduced. What Miss Faraday was doing in library service and going around classrooms, et cetera. So that will need to continue initially, but we will review that at, at Easter. In terms of practicals, yes, practicals will continue. And practicals will continue in food, et cetera, as well and music. Then it might be just the regularity of them. So, you know, you'll still do practicals, but not as often as maybe you normally would. But wherever it's on your curriculum, we'll look at trying to deliver those practicals. And I think another thing just to say there is we've worked really hard at Springs to ensure that you get your curriculum. We've not stripped any subjects out, we haven't stripped any subjects out during lockdown. You know, young people have had a really broad and balanced curriculum and they'll continue to get that.
Okay, the next question is around exemption certificates and exemption from mask wearing. If a student had an exemption before Christmas, do they still stand or does parents need to reapply?
Yeah, good, a good question. I'd ask please that you do just fill in the form. Because what we need is a comprehensive list of, of young people that, that can't wear masks and we need to start the list off from scratch. So I apologise if, if that causes a little bit more work. It should only take five minutes to fill the form in, but I'd appreciate if you could just do it again for us. That'd be a great help and it would just make sure that your child, you know, is not challenged when, when they're back on Monday and we can get them a, a lanyard.
Okay, quite a few questions regarding the fact that Covid testing is not compulsory. And, and as you've already explained, not every child in school has been tested. Could you just explain a little bit more about that and how that sort of, how that's been, how that's working?
Yeah, so obviously, we work within the guidance that we're, we're, we're set with. Young people, their parents have the right for the children to be tested. Equally, they do not have to be, be tested as well. We can't force people to get regular tests. What I will say is that the majority of the school population have been tested or will be tested by tomorrow. I believe it's around two thirds, perhaps just over, might be just over by tomorrow, but around two thirds of the school have been tested by tomorrow. So if young people aren't tested, then they are still allowed to classes. We're not as a school legally allowed to stop anyone from coming into school because they refuse to get a test. As, you know, as head teacher, I'm not allowed to do that. The guidance states that, you know, we want as many parents to consent for their child to be tested as possible. But if a, a parent is uneasy about that, then it shouldn't prevent them, their child from coming into school. That's government policy.
Okay. And then there, I think at the moment, there's just one final question regarding if students haven't been tested in school this week, but parents still wish to do tests at home. And is that possible and how does that work?
And that's a good question. I believe, and I'll, I'll check this and come back to people, but I believe that if you obviously have a household where a, a young person is going to school, you can go to a, a local centre where you can collect the lateral flow tests that, that we use in school. So I think you'll be able to look online and find a, a centre that will provide you with some tests for you to do them. What I'll do is I'll take that away and have a look at that and get some information out for you. I don't think it prevents you, well, it doesn't prevent you from doing the tests. But it's probably where you find those tests that you need to go. But the government are trying to roll this out, I think, quite, it's quite, on a quite big scale to ensure that, you know, as many people who need testing or want to be tested, get those regular tests so that it breaks any you know, transmission down. And I'll, I'll look into that. But the test would be done through, you know, you getting those tests from a, a local test centre.
Okay, thank you very much. And I think that is the, the end of the questions.
Okay. You know, just what, I want to finish by firstly apologising for the technical errors a little bit earlier on. for the technical errors a little bit earlier on. And I think these forums are really good and we're going to continue them even when schools open because I think it's useful for me to be able to explain things to you, be accountable to you and you be able to ask questions that you may have. And I hope you're reassured that, you know, we're taking this really seriously. We're working hard to protect our young people and everybody connected with them and staff as well. And, you know, we will deal with this together as a school community. And hopefully successfully as well. And it'll be just great to see the young people back in school on Monday. So thank you for taking the time to join me this evening. I hope you found it useful because that's the intention of doing these live events, that we give you the opportunity to listen but also ask questions as well.